Order, Terry, Ms. Pomway, would you, Pomroy, let me get it right.
Okay.
Ms. Pomway, would you please call roll?
Councilmember Beard?
Here.
Councilmember Jones? Councilmember Fan?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Nguyen?
Here.
And Mayor Broadwater?
Here.
Okay.
At this time, I see nobody here. We could open up oral communications for going into the closed session, but I see no one here. So we'll open them up anyway and close them up. The City Council will each be going into closed session on a threat of litigation.
Garden Grove Housing Authority Meeting, with the clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Broadwater?
Here.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Here.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Here.
Vice Chair Fan?
Here.
Chair Beard?
Here.
And Commissioner Beckles is absent.
Okay, we're, first item on the agenda is oral communications on housing authority matters. Seeing none, item number two, the consent items.
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, six yes votes.
Okay, item number three, no public hearings, and items for consideration, none. And matters from the chair, commissioners or director. Seeing none, we're adjourned. Thank you.
I'm gonna retire. Okay, at this time, we'll open up the Garden Grove City Council meeting. We'll have the invocation by Susan Emery and the Pledge of Allegiance by Christopher Pham.
Lord, we are meeting today to conduct matters of business. Guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought, and speech. Impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
Amen. Please pledge your hands with your heart, recite the pledge with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's my understanding that we have a presentation this evening?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like Susan Emery to make the presentation this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. The Garden Grove City Council is proud to direct tonight's community spotlight on a wonderful group of people who have enhanced the community with their time, generosity, and spirit of service. With Pastor John Rittenhouse, Associate Pastor Bob Ramsey, Community Director Cecilia Helmers, Board Member Gary Helmers, Children's Director Lisa Rittenhouse, Administrator Javier Vargas, Pat Rothenberger, Megan Brayton, and Justin Ancalci-Zewick from Living Springs Christian Fellowship, please come forward. In 2010, Living Springs Christian Fellowship partnered with the City of Garden Grove for the Neighborhood Improvement Day Program. The program brings together volunteer labor forces and donated materials to help address the most blighted homes in various neighborhoods throughout the city. Code enforcement put residents who are unable to make repairs themselves in touch with Living Springs. The church then creates a work plan, solicits donations of materials, and organizes volunteers to clean up and repair the homes. Through the help and donations of local businesses, the church is able to transform each residence into a place that families can be proud to call home. This is a massive outreach for the church as they typically mobilize over 250 people into the community. The church motto is, "Don't just go to church, be the church." And that's exactly what they do one Sunday each year. They reach out to homeowners who are elderly, disabled, low-income, and whose homes do not meet city code standards. We'd like to show you a short video from the last cleanup day, which occurred on June 9th, so you can see how much of an impact Living Springs has on the community and on our local residents.
What you been doing?
I've been finding and killing spiders.
This is the most wonderful group of people I've ever come across.
I'm not taking weights. What do you think it means to be the church?
To help people.
At this time, the mayor and City Council would like to present Living Springs Christian Fellowship with a beautiful crystal memento for their tireless volunteer efforts to improve the community. The city thanks all of you for your kindness, charity, and caring for Garden Grove. Thank you.
Please come forward. You're welcome.
It worked.
Well done.
She's good at technical. Thanks.
What is the church?
It's speech, too. I was in charge.
Yeah, come on in, kinda like back in over here.
Okay, and you say you'll see again in July, what time?
June 1st. Thanks for the reminder, we forgot.
Pastor, would you like to say a few words?
If I might. You know, every so often, Pastor, you can say.
Here's the rest of the box.
First of all, we'd like to say thank you very much. We are honored to be recognized. But more importantly, we're honored to be part of the City of Garden Grove. We've been here for 50 years. And in the last few years, we've kind of ramped it up a little bit. And we've ended up working with 10 homes now that we've done. We've given out over 6,000 bags of groceries, over thousands of articles of clothing. We've fed homeless, we've helped them shower, not actually in the shower, but we've provided them.
We understand.
Good, good, thanks, that's helpful. And so, we just feel like we're kind of just getting started. And so, we are excited to be a part of this city, and we're excited to see what God is gonna be doing through us. Proverbs 11:10 says, "We're the righteous prosper, the city rejoices." And I don't know how righteous we are, but we're doing our best, and we want the city to rejoice and to prosper as well. So thank you very, very much, we really appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go to oral commi- We'll go to oral communications. Noreen Thompson?
Good evening. First thing I want to say is thank you for the prompt response from Mayor Broadwater, his office, and council members regarding the situation we were having in the Lamson and Lamp lighter intersection. Mayor Broadwater and I met at the intersection after the council meeting last March 26. After seeing the big picture at the intersection, Mayor Broadwater had his office call me that a no U-turn sign will be posted and that a protected left turn signal will be installed no later than June. I am here tonight to give everyone an update. The new traffic signal was installed not in June, but towards, before the schools started because they were having problems. I was not able to observe that intersection until my husband and I came back from dropping off my daughter, my first high college student in England. I noticed that the no U-turn sign was no longer there. It was replaced by a new sign that is basically saying yield on the green light. There was the green arrow that changed into a green ball, which is the reason I am here again. My understanding of a protected left turn, correct me, please, if I'm wrong. A protected left turn signal allows vehicles to proceed during the display of the green left turn arrow only. No permissive green ball is displayed, therefore vehicles may not move during gaps in the opposing through traffic. The sign yield and green brings us back to the same situation as we were in March. People are still making U-turns, still trying to beat the yellow and red light, therefore putting our children in danger again when crossing the street. That was never corrected. I called the city and spoke to Dan Candelario on October 16, and was told that there is really nothing that they can do about it because it will take tens of thousands of dollars to make it so. He had advised me that he will bring this up at the next meeting, which was last October 8, and that he will ask the Garden Grove Police Department to monitor the intersection in the morning when the kids are going to school and when they finish from school. That was two weeks ago. I still have two children that crosses that intersection to go to Pacifica and Bell. Every day, I would ask them if they've seen the Garden Grove Police Department, and every day, they will tell me no. My question is, is it worth the city saving a few dollars than our children's lives and safety? Thank you for all your time.
Thank you. Charles Mitchell?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and staff. There is a saying, "That those who ignore history are doomed to repeat it." As a history buff myself, I've studied many different periods in history. In the 1930s, when the National Socialist Party came into power in Germany, otherwise known as the Nazis, the first step was the indoctrination of the children. They made it a policy that children will be asked a number of questions in their schools. They would be asked what their religion was, where did their parents come from, what are their parents' affiliations, what organizations do they belong to? Eventually, it reached the point where the questioning was so intensive that shortly thereafter, there would be a knock on the door, and the parents would be escorted out by Gestapo agents and sent to a concentration camp. This happened. This is history. But could it happen here in this country? Well, I'm beginning to wonder. There is a program called Common Core, and it really disturbs me because the children are being asked questions and they are required to answer. What is your religion? What is your parents' political affiliation? What is your sexual orientation? Allegedly, these are questions being asked in schools, and this story was broken by a newspaper in Montgomery County School District in Maryland. The Blaze is the name of the newspaper. They found out about this and started inquiring, and all the information that had been accumulated from these students suddenly disappeared. They kept investigating, and finally, the school district was reluctantly willing to make available the fact that these questions were being asked, these and other questions of our children. I, I wouldn't say that I'm paranoid, I'm scared to death that something like this is happening in our country. And I've reached the point where I'm beginning to wonder if in the future, we might have to decide how to spend our money, whether to buy a Muslim prayer rug or ammunition. Thank you.
Peter Katz?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, everyone, council staff, residents. My name is Peter Katz, I'm a member of the Vietnam War Museum Board, and I'm gonna promote two events on behalf of the War Museum tonight. But I wanted to reflect a little bit on the young people that were here from the church tonight because it reminded me of something. On the way in here, I found a penny in the parking lot, a shiny new penny. And it reminded me of something my father once told me, he said, "Never pass up a penny if you see one, because if you do, it means that you've never been hungry." And so these folks that work very hard for the church, that help those less fortunate than us in the community, it's nice to see them thanked, because a lot of that work goes unthanked, and they do a wonderful job in the community, all the faith-based organizations. So there's a lot of rhetoric in news media about organizations, but a lot of them do some very hard work for free, so let's not take that for granted. Before I talk about these two events, I wanna talk about an event in Vietnam on March 26, 1970. In those days, there were no names of battles like Tet, or Hui, or Khe Sanh. They were just patches of ground. But on that day, at a place called Dog's Head, which was a little jutting point on the Cambodian border, the 1st Cavalry Division Alpha Troop outnumbered 4 to 1, shot their way into Rescue Charlie Company, which had been completely surrounded and cut off. There are other small points like Parrot's Beak on the Cambodian border, soldiers whose valor went untold for many, many years. Well, 40 years later, and President Obama, in learning of this event, ordered 86 survivors of this battle, of this 100-unit man, to the White House and awarded the Presidential Unit Citation. It's the highest military honor presented to the United States military. It's only been awarded slightly over 100 times. And these survivors earned every bit of it. It shows you that soldier stories are lost when soldiers come home. So this museum is going to tell the stories of some of those soldiers before they pass away. And so, it's a reminder to the community that freedom is not free. Battles are continuing to be fought for our freedom. And the event like the golf tournament tomorrow afternoon, and the awards dinner and silent auction at 6:00 PM out at the Naval Golf Course in Seal Beach is another event that will raise money for building our museum and opening it so we can tell the stories of how people sacrificed coming to this country. On the 14th of November, we have a speaker series up here. Quang Pham, who was a refugee that came to the United States and gave back to his country, his new country, by joining the Marines, became a distinguished author and soldier, and now will tell his story on November 14. So your support, your checks, your donations will help build this museum and tell a story, the soldier's story. In the words of President Obama, this is, this is what soldiers do. Not only for their country, but for each other. We give to each other, and we help come back and we build bridges in the community. So the soldiers you see on the street, if you see them in uniform, just thank them for your freedom. It doesn't cost anything to say thank you for a job well done. Thank you.
Thank you. Josh McIntosh?
Good evening, mayor, council staff, and people watching at home. I'm gonna do some promotion here also. This coming Thursday through Sunday, we have the Garden Grove Indie Fest USA coming, film festival with free music and movies in the park. We hope that everyone will come out and participate in that. I'd like to thank the council for making it a little easier to get it done this year and supporting us. Thank you guys very much for your support, and hope to see everybody there. The fun is from 4:00 to 10:00 PM, Thursday through Sunday. And also, I'm very, very proud of you guys for acknowledging the Living Springs Christian Fellowship Church. I know I mentioned it several months ago when they went out to one of my neighbor's homes and fixed it up and made all the difference in our neighborhood. They're truly Garden Grove heroes. And that's about it for tonight, it's gonna be short and sweet. And Mr. Fan, I actually have a gift for you. The rest of you will all get to enjoy this next Saturday.
John Winsmith?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council staff, and citizens of Garden Grove. I'd first like to publicly thank, last Thursday, we had, I'm sorry, I'm with the Garden Grove Neighborhood Association. Last Thursday, we had the first of a series of town hall meetings. I'd like to thank the speakers. We had Chief Rainey there, Lieutenant Boddy, and we had Dr. Maffey and Dr. West from School District and School Board, the Board of Education. I'd also like to thank three of our council that were there, Council of Beard, Jones, and Fan, and also the people that attended. This coming Saturday, we're having a, what's described as an old-fashioned howling Halloween festival. This is gonna take place at the home of Cheryl Armstrong at 12421 Laurelene Street, just off Lamson. It should be a good evening with lots of fun. It's a little bit scary, but there'll be, you know, we're asking for a $2 donation to go in, and for a little bit more, there'll be some food there, hot dogs, pork, sandwiches, chili, et cetera. We'll also have a fortune teller, Scarticia, a fortune teller, and Scary Larry's Scary Tour. So it should be a lot of fun. I don't want to take anything away from Josh and the Indie Fest, but it'll start at 6 o'clock. And I hope you'll all bring, you know, come along, bring your children, grandchildren, or fiance. And I think you'll all have a lot of fun if you can make it along there. Again, it's 12421 Laurelene Street, that's about the 3rd street west of Gilbert. And I think, Mr. Mayor, I think you've been, yeah, you have been there before, I know. It's a huge backyard, and it is scary, I was there the weekend.
That's the backyard with the big tree?
That's it, yes, yes. It's a, it should be an exciting event and lots of food and drink and whatever. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, we have no written communications. We'll recess the City Council, and we're gonna go to the successor agencies business.
Thank you, Mayor. Madam Clerk, would you like to call roll?
Member Broadwater?
Here.
Member Nguyen?
Here.
Member Fan?
Here.
Vice Chair Beard?
Here.
And Chair Jones?
Here.
Okay, we already did oral communications in conjunction with City Council, so we'll move on to the consent items, it's just approval of the warrants, I have a motion.
Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
We have no public hearings, no items for consideration, any matters from members? Seeing none, we'll adjourn back to City Council.
We're gonna go to the Sanitarium District.
Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Member Broadwater?
Here.
Member Jones?
Here.
Member Nguyen?
Here.
Vice President Beard?
Here.
And President Fan?
Here. We've done oral communications, consent items, just one item to receive and file the minutes from July 9th of 2013. I have a motion to-
So moved.
Second.
Call for vote, please.
Motion received, five yes votes.
We have no public hearings, no items for consideration, no matters from the board or general manager, president, nobody. All right, we'll adjourn, this meeting will reconvene back on November 26 at 6:30.
At this time, we reconvene the City Council, and we'll go to consent items.
Mr. Mayor, it's recommended that items 6A through 6C be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion is requested.
I move to approve.
Second.
Call for the vote.
Motion received, five yes votes.
We have a public hearing, 7A.
Mr. Mayor, 7A is a public hearing to conduct a protest hearing regarding the fall 2013 weed abatement notices, and Sabrina Saltis is here to give a staff report.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, twice a year, the Fire Department initiates the city's weed abatement program, and there are three steps. The first is the council's declaration of a public nuisance. The second is a public hearing- The second is a public hearing after the notice, to clear lots are sent to the property owners. The third is a public hearing after the lots are cleared and invoices are unpaid by the property owners. The purpose of tonight's public hearing is the second step, for a public hearing to be held regarding the notices that were sent to property owners in September. It is recommended that council receive testimony from members of the public and take appropriate actions. Those actions would be to uphold any objections and direct staff as to how the council would like to respond to said objections, to overrule the objections and direct staff to proceed with the weed abatement process, and if there are no objections, direct staff to proceed with the weed abatement process.
Any questions for staff? Hearing none, at this time, we'll open up the public hearing. Anybody like to speak on this issue? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Ladies and gentlemen, what are your wish?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion approved and a second, call for the vote.
Would you mind voting again, please? Motion received, five yes votes.
Number nine, time for consideration, items for consideration, none. Ordinance presented for second reading, none. Matters from mayor, city council members, and city manager, Mr. Beard.
It's Red Ribbon Week, I've been reminded by my wife, schoolteacher, and say no drugs, that's the message out there, and the other good news is, hey, Halloween's coming up. And so, to all the ghouls and goblins and little trick-or-treaters out there, I wish you a happy Halloween, and be safe, and have your parents inspect your candy, as we inspect our kids' candy every year. It's quite a treat. Okay, that's it, thank you.
Peter Nguyen.
That's why it's a good time to buy in Garden Grove. Hey, Halloween! Also, Josh forgot to mention that there will be lots of famous people at the Indie Festival, so if you want to see the stars and entertainers, you should come out and join the festival. And happy birthday to Councilmember Beard.
I do want to do that.
As for me, happy birthday, Chris.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. What Josh McIntosh handed me was basically a CD that he had prepared, because Josh will be actually our DJ at my wedding here on the 2nd of November. So, to everyone out there, this is my last meeting with you as a single man, next time you see me, I'll be a married man. For better, for worse, actually, I didn't say that, for better. I look forward to, I look forward to seeing many of you there at our celebration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to comment that this afternoon was the 15th Annual Food for Thought Luncheon put on by the Garden Grove Community Foundation. It was a wonderful event with 200 students from all the various Garden Grove Unified School District high schools in attendance, and a wonderful motivational speaker who kept the crowd going and got all these kids thinking about going on to college and beyond, so it was a wonderful day.
The staff played a very tricky trick on me, they came up with an amended agenda, and I went right, blew right by it. We've got another issue, 8A appointments to City Command, Mission Vagacities, you all got a copy of the list? So, unless somebody has a comment about any of the candidates, I entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Call for the vote. Josh McIntosh is always bugging us to be on a commission, he's on a commission, but he walked out the door. I was trying to stop him, but he just didn't catch the, okay.
Okay, motion received, five yes votes.
Anyway, it is one thing that nobody has mentioned, and happy birthday to Councilmember Beard, there's a big cake over there for us to eat, and so, at this time, we will...
One more item.
Oh, yes, well, we have nothing to report, so. The regular meeting of city council will be held on Tuesday, November 12, 2013, at 5:30 PM. Enjoy your cake, thank you very much.